I welcome you all to our budget work number five. I guess just some admin things tonight. Tonight's an opportunity for board members to continue to ask questions. Ask for us to clarify, get additional information if there's still things that you need more information about. In looking at the budget schedule, we have on the calendar deliberations, of course, We also have budget deliberations for, on the calendar for tomorrow night. We'll see at the end of this session if we actually need tomorrow night because we have next week and what we have is a Board of Selectment meeting on Monday and then scheduled Tuesday for a special board meeting with additional review and then a final vote on our budget. So I'm kind of hoping that between tonight and we've added to our agenda for Monday discussion on the budget in our regular Board of Selectment agenda if there's anything we want to talk about then. And then, of course, we can deliberate again on Tuesday. So best case, maybe we can forego our Wednesday evening meeting.
Okay.
If we get through what we need to get through tonight. I guess I would first like to open it up to the board for any general questions that you might have at this time. We will go through the budget and we're going to start with capital tonight, but then we'll go back and go through the book. And this is your opportunity to really identify areas that you might want to modify our spending plan. Anyway, so if there's any general questions or general comments that anyone wants to make before we dive in, please feel free.
I don't know if this is now or if I should discuss it when we get to certain public works. I would be curious to see if it's possible to look at a more of a long-term sidewalk plan, but I don't know if that's something that would be in this year's budget.
A long-term what?
Sidewalk plan.
Sidewalk.
So I think that there is an opportunity for that, Sarah. And what I'm hoping will inform that is the work that has already been underway in the Public Works Department. Ed has shared that his staff has worked, walked the entirety of our sidewalk inventory, made detailed notes, and they're preparing a map for us of our sidewalk inventory with a grading, if you will, to show, you know, work that needs to be done immediately and then, and then the outworks. And you may recall that I've asked that we then overlay the school's bus plan on top of that GIS layer so that we can see, you know, what falls in those, in those diameters that really needs attention. And I think from that, we can begin to craft a long-term.
That sounds fantastic.
Yep. I don't, I don't think it will require any additional monies this year. Once we have, you know, a full picture of the work that needs to be done, we might be able to do something.
That sounds fantastic.
Anything else?
All right. I'm getting into the detail.
Great. All right, so let's start with capital because that's always a little bit more interesting anyway.
Where do you want to start, what page?
Yeah, I'm looking at.
Looking for anything in particular or?
I guess we start on page 204, really.
Okay.
Yep. You know, I am going to recommend to the board that we hold our, our reserves as have been proposed by Kate. I think it's always been very prudent to keep those adequately funded.
Yep. And after we had an issue downstairs.
Yep.
That arose, I think it's been coming for a little while, but it came to a head this morning where they had to do some repairs to pipes underneath the floor in the art center.
Yeah, a steam pipe.
A steam pipe.
Yeah.
You never know.
Yeah.
And remember, this is a very old building.
Mm-hmm.
It's a good old building.
It's a good old building.
It is.
Trying to make Oxford last this long.
Absolutely.
We hope you do.
Yep.
Can I just have a question overall?
Yes.
On this page. So life to bu, life to date budget.
Yes.
Each one of these projects has a different starting point.
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
So is there any way for us to, maybe it's not important to know when they started or what? Because, I mean, for example, the town hall renovation reserve of $878,000 is life to date budget.
Yes.
With 207 in available balance.
So let me, do you still do that report for the Board of Finance on the capital fund?
Yes.
Okay, so there is a report that shows when the original appropriations were put into each of the accounts. And then, you know, some, all this information and it has other things, but there is a report that would show you that. There also is a clue if, if you saw the actual account numbers. We build the fiscal year into the account numbers, but you don't have that here, so.
No, no.
But we can get that for you. So something like the renovation reserve.
I don't need that because I was trying.
Though the renovation reserves are at least 20-plus years old.
And you spend about $670,000 of that.
Mm-hmm.
So they're.
They've done a lot of things.
Right.
Yeah.
And you put money in each year?
Yes.
To keep it going. Okay. So that's sort of the way the whole, this whole capital page is trying to tell us.
Yes. Because, you know, some projects we fund maybe over two or three years. Others are long-term, like you said, you know, 20-plus. Others are here and gone.
Right. Okay.
Okay, so I guess I'll start off the conversation. There's a couple of things that, you know, I'm not yet prepared to say that I'm ready to cut, but there's some things that I wanted to have further discussion about. I think we talked about at the fire departments, the SCBA replacement in, there's two different fire departments that are buying that equipment.
SCBA, not SCUBA.
Not SCUBA.
Not underwater.
Right, okay. That was my, my bad acronym then. Okay, SCBA. I'd like to, I'd like to reach out to the fire departments and ask them if they can joint purchase that. They may already do that. I don't recall what they said, but I'd like to see if they can do that. And then at the Nuroton Heights Fire Department, the asbestos removal. I'd like to understand what is, what has brought that issue to light? What work is happening in the attic that requires the abatement of asbestos at this When I was thinking about the replacing the fence at the drill tower under the fire commission, it triggered my thoughts about the false fire alarm fund and how that might get used. So it might be helpful, Kate, for you to share with everybody information about that fund and how it could be used.
So the charter basically says that it has to be used to help improve the fire service. And I think, you know, that could be defined in so many different ways. Looking at some of the things, so the fire commission is the one who chooses, who okays the spending of it. Looking at some of the ways they have spent it in the past, I think that the drill tower would fit in, within that definition. The thing is, we cannot, as, as the ordinance stands, we cannot tell them that they must take it out of there.
Correct. The reason why I thought it might be a good source of some funding is because the false fire alarms, you know, really cut across all three departments.
Yes.
And so the, all three departments benefit from the utilization of the drill tower. So in that case, we would cut a portion. Is that what we think? Because there's, I don't think there's enough money in the false fire alarm to cover that fire expense.
Right now, there's about $35,000, of which, about another $10,000 is spoken for in purchase orders. They will have revenue coming in for the rest of the year, but they don't take in huge amounts of money in that fund. So $20,000 would be a big expenditure to come out of there.
But you think it would be, we could rationalize a $20,000 cut to the, replacing the fencing and suggest to them that they, to the false fire alarm fund?
Or you take out the concrete pad and say, you know?
Yeah.
Do that.
Yep. That's probably a good idea. So I'm going to throw, I'm going to throw the concrete pad on the potential cut list with that theory in mind. Not that I don't support expanding the concrete pad, but funding it in a different way.
Do we know what happened with the, I'm on page 205, line 15, boat motors? We talked about that trade-in. The $33,000 is net of the trade-in.
Oh, that was that, okay. I don't have anything else to discuss really on capital other than parks and rec. So before we jump into that complicated conversation, I want to ask all of you about other areas, other areas of capital.
It occurred to me, we have the analysis of the IT for the building, correct?
Mm-hmm.
If there are recommendations made that are pricey, is there enough in the information system network budget if we needed to replace software or if we?
I don't see them, I don't see it coming out recommending that we replace software.
Okay.
Because, you know, one of the big things that we were asking them to look at was, here's what we have.
Right.
And here's, you know, where we are replacing software, here's what we're looking at. We want to know if, are there ways to integrate them together better? But if it were to come out and say that, you know, you should make these kind of replacements, then we'd come back either in next year's budget or if we felt it was urgent, we'd come back and ask for a special appropriation.
Right, okay.
But I'm not anticipating that it will require a large expenditure.
Major, okay.
And I think some of it, you know, what I'm hoping we get out of it is information, say, you know, evaluate this. This is going to cost you X amount of dollars and decide whether it's worth it to do this.
Or when to do it, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else other than for parks and rec to talk about in capital? Okay, so we went on a little field trip today down to Weed Beach first to look at the tennis courts for paint. And then I went to Cherry Lawn Park to look also at the tennis courts there and at the basketball court that's no longer utilized. It's actually blocked off with some concrete barriers so that nobody can drive onto the asphalt. And I'm happy to share photos with all of you. There's no question that the basketball facility as it is right now at Cherry Lawn is not usable. I would say really from the perspective that, you know, the, the standards haven't been kept up, the surface is uneven, the issues with the tree roots aren't as significant as I thought. That's not to say that they, they won't become an issue. The trees that have been discussed for taking out are actually two really large pine trees. And they look very healthy and I can't exactly rationalize the removal of those trees for a short-term measure if the thought of parks and rec is that one day they're going to build a full court somewhere else in the park. So I think that would be shortsighted to remove those trees. I, I talked to Pam after my little field trip and she really liked the idea of trying to construct a half-court in that area so that we could continue some outdoor basketball activities. But I also do want to share that there are basketball courts throughout town at the schools. And put my finger on the info. The high school, the middle school, and Tokonik all have two backboards and the other schools have one. I think they're in various stages of repair, but the town does have outdoor basketball courts on our public school properties. So according to Pam, the $10,000 that Kate cut from the budget for demolition of that area could be reinstated and repurposed toward constructing a half-court facility in that Our internal staff is willing to contribute their labor to do the demolition and whatever regrading has to happen. So I don't, I don't ever really like to go against the town administrator's recommended budget, but in this case, you know, we're trying to figure out how to achieve a certain number of goals here. So I'd love to hear what you guys think about outdoor basketball at Cherry Lawn Park this year.
I went and walked the park this afternoon as well and I agree with most of your comments. The one thing that I would add is on the end of the existing court that is away from the large trees that you referenced.
Yes.
There is still some parkland that's available there. It looks like after you get about 10 or 12 feet off the asphalt surface, it sort of starts to dip down a hill. So the regrading and potentially some filling, you know, might be needed there. But I think there would certainly be room and that would allow us to keep the asphalt on the half-court pretty far away from the two trees in question. So in case the roots, as Kate was referring to last night, in case the roots run further but haven't yet worked their way to the surface, the, the new court would be far enough away. So I think that that's, to me, that seems like a pretty reasonable, you know, solution to make it available so that kids that live in the area can use that facility.
Yeah, I absolutely support getting something at Cherry Lawn. I'm obviously concerned about the roots and I'm not a horticulturalist, but I don't, so I would defer on that. But I would support putting the $10,000 back, using the labor and going forward to at least get a half-court or the 84 by 50 she mentioned.
Do we need to put a placeholder that's a little bigger than the 10 that was going to be taken out for the demolition? Because the number, there were a lot of numbers that got talked about for construction there and I don't think we have that, you know, pinned down closely yet.
I'm concerned. Yeah, there was a 90,000 term out for a full court, so if I look at it, half of that.
Well, I think we would be talking about two different kinds of construction.
Right, right.
90,000 is for.
The full court.
Yeah, but it's also.
That other surface.
Different material.
Okay, thank you. She showed me plans for an asphalt half-court that would cost between 10 and $20,000, but that cost estimate includes the cost of labor. So if you back out the cost of labor, I mean, we might be tight with $10,000, but I think it might be, I think it, it could work.
May I throw in, into this discussion then, the traffic study?
Yes.
I would support using that funds for that.
Yeah.
Given the fact that the traffic study is also to look at further use of the park maybe in a few years. And I know right now, we're not looking at redeveloping Cherry Lawn in any significant way. I would love to get this possible court out there.
Yeah.
And we can do the traffic study another time.
I, that's how I would rather see that, $8,000 used.
Yeah, I think the comment last night was they'd like to look at the parks in a holistic manner, so they look at the entirety of the park. And I would be a little concerned about looking at changing the egress and exit to the park now and then they come up with a bigger plan that, you know.
Would change.
Right.
Might require another modification subsequently depending on what they choose to do.
Yeah, that's how I kind of felt, that they needed to have more of an idea what they wanted to see how the traffic study fit into that plan.
Yeah, backwards.
That, that's kind of how I felt about it too, so.
So are we talking about putting in 18,000 for the half-court?
I, I, I might modify that and say that we, we put $15,000 in intended for construction of a half-court.
And have the traffic study.
Have the traffic study, yep.
Okay.
And I did speak to Pam about that and, you know, I think that if they do anything significant, you know, if they're looking to add another significant amenity that would generate traffic, a traffic study has to be part of those plans and applications anyway, so.
Yeah, that's kind of what, yeah, I felt too.
All right.
Do you have a picture of the tree?
Yes. There's two trees, actually.
That's fine.
Well, it's, and so it's a pine tree?
Yeah, a jonesy.
Depends upon whether it's a white pine or whether it's a cedar.
It's not, it's not white pine.
It's not a white pine.
Looks like some type of a fir tree.
Yeah, or I think one of them is a cedar.
Yeah.
Okay, because white pines are notorious for having surface roots and they go beyond their, their umbrella.
Oh.
It's definitely not, it's definitely not.
So if it's not a white pine, you're probably in good shape, but I would get it right. All right, that's a cedar.
Yep.
Okay. Now, those roots aren't a good problem, just move them, just move it away from the trees.
Um, okay.
So we're adding in seven for taking out the traffic to net 15?
Yes. Yep. Okay, tennis court paint. We were told that you should really be repainting the tennis courts every five to six years. It's been seven years down at Weed Beach. This $66,000 is only for repainting at Weed Beach.
And a little bit of regrading, I thought she said.
Some filling in of the, of the low spots.
Okay, yeah.
The front courts, there's areas that are chipping. It needs attention. I didn't see on the back courts that the paint was that bad. The courts really need to be cleaned. They're very dirty, but the, certainly the white lines are all in actually pretty pristine condition. So I wondered about, sometimes it's better to just get all this stuff done at the same time, but I did wonder about the possibility of cutting that funding request in half and only doing the front court, repainting the front courts in this year. And I, you know, I'll open it up to your opinions on that. I don't know if anybody went down and looked at them.
I don't have a chance to cut out that.
So the, the high school doesn't use those for any competition?
Interestingly, they use Cherry Lawn courts and if you see, the Cherry Lawn courts are in really bad condition.
Yeah.
Really bad. I took a bunch of pictures of those and.
Yeah, played there long ago.
I, I believe that the commission should really be prioritizing a reconstruction of those with post-entioned concrete and, yeah.
As long as, if this is just recreational play, I would be fine doing that and you've seen them, you play, so I'd support that.
You know, obviously, our exercise tonight is to try and fine-tune our budget, but you know, I don't want to be shortsighted or foolish in, in doing that. If we think it's better to just, when the painters are down there, take care of all six of the courts.
Well, is that something we could ask of they, you know, how much?
If there's an advantage to doing all six at once?
Yeah, right. You know, how much of this is administrative baked in if they came next year?
I'm going to guess if they painted the courts, it probably is not an issue. You know, if we were constructing, obviously that's an issue.
That would be my guess too, right.
But the painting, I can't see how that would be an issue, but.
You know, you think of setup and all of that, if there's any, what is our cost of moving it?
Yeah.
Doing half now, half extra?
I did not get a chance to inspect them, but I did speak with someone who plays down there and the comments that I heard were very similar to what you said, which is they didn't, they did not believe that the back courts needed anything other than a good cleaning.
Okay, that's good to know, yeah. Yeah. There was someone playing down there when I was down there, but there were people playing on Cherry Lawn today too and those courts scare me a little bit because there's areas that are cracking that really look like they could be a tripping hazard.
They have been repainted though, recently, Cherry Lawn's courts. That's a long-term project, that's a big one.
Yeah, but the surface isn't very good.
Right.
You can see the line's a little bit better.
Yeah.
But that's not on our calendar.
Okay, so that's a potential $33,000 cut. Kitchen equipment at Weed Beach. I think you all heard some of my comments last night. Just for clarification, the $30,000 plan is to replace all the equipment that exists I believe that there should be some additional work done to analyze exactly what can fit in there, what should be in there, under the guidance of somebody who, you know, consultant of sorts. Pam has an individual that can do that work for about $5,000, so I would be willing to move this request forward only if $5,000 or thereabouts is used for a consultant to help formulate the plan for the purchase of the equipment, what equipment we need down there. For example, you know, one of the pieces of equipment, I think Kate sent you the list today. One of them is a, you know, I hate to get in the weeds on this stuff. It's really not our purview, it's the commission's purview, so I apologize for that, but, you know, a three-flavor soft ice cream machine. And they want to say it's like $4,500.
It was a big nut.
Do we need a three, I mean, these are questions that the commission should be asking themselves, you know? What kind of concession do they want to deliver? The answer might be absolutely, we want that. But, you know, without doing that, that kind of work, I think it's arbitrary, I think, to just replicate the equipment that's there.
If you're getting into the weeds, will we sort of say, from a policy point of view, we think you ought to follow certain procedures? In a sense, maybe, possibly? Because I would say you would hire a consultant to tell you what you, what you want, what you need down there for what you want to serve. And he'd turn around and say, fine, what do you want to serve? Then I'll tell you what you need. Right? I mean, that seems pretty simple.
That's secure, that's right.
Yeah.
And we're doing that with a school. We wouldn't begin to design how we're going to do a kitchen in a school, so we have somebody from Pittsburgh who does us schools.
Right. Right, so, so your point on that, following that through, do you believe that, that exactly that process, no matter in which direction you've articulated, there should be a process to have the conversation about analyzing?
Unless you have a food expert on the commission, the answer is go out and get an expert to give you advice.
I think they did, didn't she say that they voted to maintain the same type of base your point about the ice cream, so.
Yeah, I mean, but who knows whether that guy's approach to food service is what you want to do in the future or is the best. I don't know.
Can I ask, has there been a conversation with someone who's reached out to some concessionaries as far as possible, concessioners that we'd like to have as far as things that they think would be ideal? I mean, maybe someone who's planning on using this space may have any, I don't know if that's too forward.
Yeah.
That's really trying to say, well, can I tailor to this guy or to that guy?
Right, no, I agree. You're right. I agree.
Okay. Get a consultant, consultant saying, what's your mind on your, your processing, saying, what do you want to serve?
Well, we need to know what's the basic equipment we need.
Right.
Which is, you know, the grill, top, the refrigerators.
Freezers, whatever.
The freezers.
Right.
You know, you could do, you know, when I calculated what the ROI might be, I took out things like, I took out the soft-serve ice cream. I think I took out the fry later.
Maybe not.
We're looking healthy, we're looking healthy.
Fries in the beach are not take-away for fries. Come on. But, you know, you could start with the basic stuff that you need for the beach, for food. And if we find a demand for soft-serve ice cream, it can buy that later.
Well, that's part of the consulting.
Yeah, I feel like there has to be some consultant services in here because, remember, the vendor brought all that equipment.
Correct.
There was no, there was no conversation that happened back then about what we need in there, how it's going to fit, you know, the brands and quality of the equipment because it was brought in by the vendor.
Or the demand there is driven by what's supplied. We have no idea, have people been asking for cotton candy? But he doesn't have a, throwing that out. He doesn't have a cotton candy machine.
We're in the weeds.
We're in the weeds, but it's talking about, no, 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 I, the process.
But I think consultant, we do need to figure out what it is. Maybe it's a survey to determine what it is.
Or it's a survey or something, but.
So are you talking about leaving the thirty, but requiring that at least five thousand be spent, or out of that thirty?
The thirty includes services of a consultant.
I think that would be a smart.
That would be my recommendation.
It would be a smart.
I know that we're in a place where we are trying to be poised for, not this summer, but next summer, to have our own equipment in place.
Correct.
So that we can send out an RFP. So it would be important that we.
Right, the time this summer to do that.
Thoughts? Support, no support?
I'd give it one.
I would agree.
Okay.
Have part of it be a consultant?
Okay, do we have a discretion, this is more of a bigger picture. Do we have the discretion to tell them that?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there any way to get any information or ascertain sort of like what other vendors might be interested, like what other vendors, you know, for example, what other vendors or how many vendors bid contracts in other towns? Because I would certainly hate to be the, sort of the Field of Dreams concessionaire, right? We put in all this equipment and we put in all this equipment, we've irritated the existing vendor, and other people decide they don't want to do it.
Pam said there's very good interest in.
Right, that person from Greenwich she mentioned, so I think, I'm confident she's got something lined up.
That's what a consultant's supposed to do, he's supposed to go out and figure out what's out in their market.
Right.
What are they interested in? And that's his job to figure, or his or her job to figure it out.
Assuming we have this consultant.
Rather than us.
Okay, so I'm hearing that we're going to support this with that caveat, that we want to have them spend some money on a consultant.
But we're supporting their decision to maintain that type of delivery. We're not telling, you know, telling them to change their type of delivery. Because they said they voted on it.
Yeah, I don't think that's your role to tell them.
Right, I want to make sure that they're.
Right, but we want them to.
We're supporting that decision, obviously.
Yes, we want them to hire a consultant to make sure that they put the proper equipment in place.
There was some conversation last night about the health department, and the health department doesn't inspect it down there.
Yes, they do.
But they have not historically been required to post their grade like other eating establishments in town.
We can talk about that with.
I'm not sure that's right, that they haven't been required to, I'm thinking it's more that they haven't.
Yeah.
And with the new fines, you know, we're defining ourselves. But that's important, that we follow the regulations, just like anybody else.
And we'll talk to the health director about that.
Good.
Okay. That was, that was kind of all I had for.
The study, the concession, no?
Capital. Anybody else? All right.
I'd love to get control of radios, but I'm not going to have anything to say about it.
How do we get control of the radios?
Go to tin cans and string.
Even before control of the radios is just a better understanding of.
What each one does?
The expenditure, you know, the decentralized acquisition of radio equipment.
Well, I think it's like with anything within that group. I really think, to be better stewards of the taxpayer dollars, we need to force centralized purchasing, forced combined purchasing.
Absolutely, I agree with you.
Because you said that in the turnout area, each department chooses what they want, whether they, this guy may want, this department may want.
Somewhere black, somewhere brown.
Exactly, and I mean, okay, I'm not trying to force them all to look like a bunch of, you know, robots, but at the same time, how about saving some money at the process?
Are they on different radios?
No, no, they can communicate, yeah, they're all, they're on the same radio system and they can communicate. Yeah, there's a whole host of things around something like that. Buy at the same time, what's your policy on who gets the turnout here? You know, trying to buy the same, but it's with all sorts of this thing there.
I would love to put that whole topic on a future agenda, just to look at it holistically.
Yeah. I would agree. We can bring the fire departments in and, you know, ask them to partner with us on.
And the commission, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. Do we want to talk about the historical society? Because it's not really in the budget, so we're going to go through the budget. It's, I kind of feel like it's an item that's hanging out there that, you know.
I mean, there is, the funding is under community services.
All right, we'll wait then till we get there, that's fine. All right. General government. We see the cost centers here, so we'll just, we'll go one at a time, make sure we don't miss anything. Board of Selectmen. And I'll just go through, you guys stop me, all right? Town Administrator.
If you don't get that intern, I guess the number goes out of the budget, but if you don't get the intern.
Yeah.
Yeah, or we would, I don't know what else we could do. The only other thing I thought about proposing this year was to do some sort of town-wide satisfaction survey. So if we weren't able to get the intern, I might come back and ask you to repurpose it for that.
That's a great idea.
Why ask about food at the beaches? I like service.
Help out.
Cost savings.
I like that idea, Kate.
That was, what, sixteen-five, right?
Sixteen-five, yeah. I really hope we get that though.
That'd be great.
Yeah. Okay. We're okay funding the TV seventy-nine hard drive in admin officer support services? I think so.
You're all happy with the way we're handling parking tickets now?
What do you mean by that?
Well, we're doing it from here rather than through the police department.
Yes, yes.
It's much more efficient.
It's much better.
It's more efficient, I think we also, you know, not to say bad things about them, we are more aggressive about going after people who are Scott laws.
I know, I was there the day that the barrier had to go up because he came in and was yelling.
Kate's tough.
She didn't like that.
Well, Ann is tough too. Ann is, you know, if you have four tickets, you know, there are times when we get people who are repeats, she looks for their plate to see if they parked that day. And they may have paid that day, but they've got four outstanding tickets and we go get them.
Yeah.
Finance.
Skip HR.
Yeah, I did. I didn't really see anything there. HR, I remember the question. Page twenty-one. There, OSHA hearing. Hey, finance? David, do you want to make any comments at this point?
Yeah, if I could. You know, I passed out to everybody a couple of things. The first thing I passed out was, the town treasurer was kind enough to share with us the memo that she's going to share with the board of finance. And she did a good scenario analysis evaluating the potential rate of return on her investments under different interest rate scenarios. And the scenarios that she laid out were no change in interest rates, minus twenty-five basis points, minus fifty basis points, or minus seventy-five basis points, protecting to the downside, right? Because we're all worried about protecting the investments that we have. And if you look in the budget, scenario number three, which is page two in the middle, scenario number three has the federal funds rate dropping fifty basis points, and the five-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand-dollar number is the number that she included as the revenue component in her budget, okay? So that's all good. The new stuff that I have for you is the next two pages. I went on the website for the Federal Reserve Bank and looked at the Federal Open Market Committee, which is the portion of the Federal Reserve that sets the Fed funds interest rate policy. And they do a forward interest rate forecast for that period. One caveat, we all know that economic conditions can change at the chop of a hat, so forecasts can, forecasts can change. And in fact, in this calendar year, there was a reduction in the Fed funds rate that nobody anticipated, you know, at the beginning of the year. So that is a possibility, and it's something that we should keep in the forefront of our mind. Their base level forecast is for interest rates to remain flat for this calendar year, and then they begin to rise in two thousand and twenty-one, and yet again in two thousand and twenty-two. The thing that I found the most interesting to me, or sort of useful, is, you know, this is sort of a normal shape for interest rate curves. People working in investment business know that interest rate curves are inclined to be upward sloping to account for the risk the further out you go. It's the time risk, right, of the potential, right? If you look at the next page, they actually take the forecast of every member of the Federal Open Market Committee, and they plot them. So they show exactly where every member's forecast was. And if you look at that, so each individual dot represents the forecast of an individual member on the committee. And if you look, you can easily imagine the curve from the prior page drawn right in between those dots, right in the middle, that's the consensus, that's sort of how they arrive at it. The conclusion, the thing that I found interesting is that there were no members of the FOMC that were predicting an interest rate decline at this time. Obviously doesn't mean that it couldn't happen, right? We had it happen in last year, so it's a possibility. So that got me to thinking a little bit, and I think what I would ask us to consider is that we consider potentially looking at scenario two, which would be the interest rates down twenty-five basis points. I feel that that's reasonably conservative based on the forecast of the smart guys at the Fed, and still protects us to the downside in the event that there is some movement in interest rates. That type of a move, you can see if you look at scenario two, scenario two, the number was seven-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-and-one dollars, that's very precise. So that works out to be roughly a hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar increase in the income forecast. So that's what I was thinking, and I'd like to hear anybody else's thoughts, concerns, ideas.
Questions for David?
I think it makes sense, but I'm just curious as to why, I would like to hear the treasurer's response to this maybe.
Okay, well, I. I mean, it seems logical to me, what you're saying here, but.
Well, here's my fundamental driving force. When I was campaigning, the one thing I heard from every citizen was, don't raise my taxes, right? So the rule of thumb that Jen had given us was, every eighty-five thousand dollars in expense or income is one point on the mill rate. So a hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars would be roughly two points on the mill rates. Instead of, what is it, sixteen-point-four-seven currently, the mill rate would be sixteen-point-four-five. So, mind you, per household, that doesn't work out to be a lot. But it feels like, based on current interest rate forecast, that, you know, minus twenty-five basis point forecast is still conservative to protect us to the downside, and helps us try to get us, helps us balance, if you will, the not wanting to over-tax residents versus being conservative with our financial affairs.
Do you have a thought on that?
Let me look at you, Jim.
That kind of puts her in a hard spot, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But I would say, you know, to your comment, you'd like to hear the board of finance. I think if you, as a board, vote to make that change, the board of finance gets their opportunity to weigh in. And if they don't agree with you, they, you know, they will change it back.
Right, that's true.
Or change it in a different way. So it wouldn't hold off on doing it, you know, for that reason.
Can she have any thoughts?
Well, you know, trying to predict interest rates is a, it's a great game, but it's tough. The fact is, though, looking at our budget, or looking at the town flows, to the extent that we, the town ends up with a general fund which exceeds a targeted number, I think that's thirteen percent.
Twelve percent of expenses, yeah.
Then they can take the extra, and they can apply that to reduce the amount of taxes required.
In the following year.
In the following year, and that's done after the event, so they know they've got the money in the bank, they're not trying to match it with what might happen. And that always is, to me, a great safeguard to reducing the tax burden on the town, because it's done with known quantities. You've got the money in the bank, you know where your budget is, you know what your reserve you want to have, and you know, if you've got a surplus, you can then start applying it, like we did this year with, I think, paying down some debt early, correct? Which is why we have the low budget numbers this year in terms of percentage increase. So there's always that argument that says, don't be too worried about being too conservative about projecting revenues, because you have the ability to take those revenues when they're surplus and turn them around and keep your taxes low. It's a one-year lag, but then you have money that you know you have, rather than hoping you're going to get that. It's just a different philosophy, different way of looking through the same issue.
No, that's a, I think that's a, I think that's a good point. I think I sort of also had in the back of my head that the reserve, the general fund reserve is still running a little bit over fifteen percent, if I recall, so there's.
The board of finance has flexibility.
There's already some excess cushion, if you will.
I'm not sure how, did I call it excess cushion?
I only use that phrase in terms of.
Of their policy?
It is above their policy, which was set, you know, appropriately conservative relative to what the rating agencies require.
Yeah, because, you know, I think Jen and I had a discussion about it last week. Typically, across the United States, Moody's looks for you to have in excess of twenty percent fund balance for AAA, rating community. We, in Connecticut, because we are so dependent on the property tax, you know, like for us, it's about ninety-five percent of our revenues, they do give us the AAA with a lower percentage fund balance, but we do about it. When they, a number of years ago, when they downgraded the federal government, we were put on a credit watch, because we didn't have twenty percent fund balance. So, you know, I'm thinking, I don't get to influence the board of finance, but I'm thinking that, you know, looking more towards keeping fifteen percent, it's starting to be even more the, you know, what we're going to need to be doing to assure the rating agencies that we're stable.
Not to go out there reservation, but why would they give us that exception? From twenty percent down to fifteen?
Because we have the ability to raise, let, raise revenue through levying a new tax.
Rather than waiting for income taxes, which you may or may not.
Or sales tax.
And it's less volatile.
Less volatile. It's the volatility.
I thought we were on credit watch because they wanted to adjudicate our ties to state government, how reliant we were on state.
No, traditionally no support in a government has a higher rating than the federal government. And they were looking at our dependency on the federal government. And it was good indication that they really didn't understand this area at all, because they thought, you know, that our people worked in Bridgeport, were dependent on Bridgeport hospitals, things like that. They really didn't understand this region. But, yeah, that was, that was one of the, when they, what they did, they had gone through the database of. the database of all the AAA's, and if you hit certain characteristics, it tossed you out and into that credit watch, and one of them was the fund balance being less than 20%.
Yep.
Interesting.
So I actually think you're both right. And, you know, I appreciate the work that the treasurer put into, you know, the thoughtfulness around the scenarios this year, and really, I think, I think we're all feeling like we want to make sure that we're as close to right as we can be on the conservative side.
Right.
Right?
Absolutely.
So, you know, and David and I spoke earlier that, you know, our job in this budget is to look at our spending plan. How do we want to spend taxpayer dollars? Revenues are something that we don't really talk about, I think I said this before, other than how our policies impact revenues. This is obviously a policy of the town treasurer. We do have the, certainly the right to make an adjustment here if we all believe that one is warranted. The Board of Finance also has the right to make an adjustment when they look at the budget. So, you know, I think David makes a good argument, leveraging off of the good work of the treasurer, choosing, you know, one of her scenarios. I don't think, I don't think scenario number two is, at this point, risky. I wouldn't say that, but I'd love to hear from any other board members if you feel that way. We certainly don't want to...
No, scenario two is not risky, I mean, because to Kip's point, the downside is, you know, there's access, there's greater investment income left over, and it gets poured into the general fund, which still belongs to the citizens and the town.
I would say the only risk is if interest rates go more than 25 basis points lower than where they are today. That would be the risk.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sorry, yeah, yeah.
So, again, we'd all be, we wouldn't be sitting here if we could...
Oh, we'd all be rich.
Yeah. So, I mean, we could, that's a good analysis, I thank you for that. We can put that on our list of potential modifications to consider and come back to that next time. Okay. Board of Finance, very straightforward. We had a change to make there, correct?
We had a revenue of about $1,100. I had a note of $1,000.
We're adding $1,000?
Yeah, $1,000.
Right. Yep. Any questions on the assessor's expenditures? It's all pretty mandated. Tax collector, same thing applies. Legal counsel.
I just think you ought to remind us again, you know, at some point in your summary, if that's the regulatory, is it the regulatory, no, which one is it?
Line three, the one that says professional services, that's town council, and that's...
No, 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 I'm talking about...
Regulatory council?
There's a litigation in this number, it could really be up and down, it's very hard.
Number five, the regulatory council.
Regulatory thing.
Yeah, land use and no volatility.
Yeah, right, so it's a big enough. What would be the, if you had to guess, what could be the range possibility?
Oh, God, I think we've both been well over 300.
300.
Oh, yeah.
So by 10, almost 10 times that number.
Yeah, we could, yeah.
All right, I'm just, I'm just trying to make, I'm looking at the big stuff, and this is a big risk.
Yep.
It's not necessarily on the table right now, but it could be.
Right.
Yeah, I was wondering, do we have enough?
I think that...
You know, it's difficult to project. And, you know, if we knew, you know, Jeremy does a good job, when we have open cases where we can reject that, you know, this one's going to go another six months and stuff like that, so we can do. But right now, there aren't a lot of those. What we're concerned about is the moratorium.
Right, which is October.
And that's, that that is going to lead to more cases.
Starting in the, start of '21.
Starting in '20, October 20.
Yeah, end of '20. But remember, there's a process involved, like the moratorium will end, applications would be received, they have to be, you know, go through the town process, and then...
That's what I'm thinking.
So I don't think that we would experience...
We'll know better next year, what we're looking at after July 1st.
Yeah, we might want to take a hard look at this number next year. All right. You know, I just will make a comment here. I really am hoping that over the next year or two, we can find opportunities for digitizing services in the town clerk's office, to find some methods of modernization.
It was one of the ones we flagged for the technology assessment, too.
Great.
Take that for granted.
And the state doesn't prohibit us from doing that, I mean, impede us from doing it?
No.
Okay.
We're hoping we don't have an Iowa moment.
Honest to God.
Honest to God.
Anybody know who's won yet?
Nope.
Not a...
Mayor Pete did well.
They all came out last night and said how well they did.
Everyone won.
But now, right, Mayor Pete and...
Participation trophies for all.
And the shadow, the shadow app company is sort of apologizing, and probably...
I know, yeah, exactly.
They're probably never getting any business from the party again.
From anybody. Like, they're done, they're done.
Probably overseas right now.
Okay. IT, looking forward to the outcome of the analysis.
Yeah, that's...
Absolutely, yes. We, I sent out a link to all employees this afternoon for the survey of, you know, their, you know, how they felt about our technology services. And like, within an hour, they'd already gotten over a dozen responses.
Oh, my, wow.
They were just, yeah, get that feedback. Strongly.
I'm thinking, yes.
Is Georgia on vacation?
Georgia's on vacation.
Oh, you sneaked, you did it.
That's why they were...
George gets a hate...
I couldn't reach you.
Oh, my gosh. Absolutely.
All right, we're going to go into land use and permitting. No choice in the software maintenance support, we have to keep City View going?
Yes, until, because we won't have the other one in place, and so we do.
Building control. So looking at the revenues, we asked the question about the permit fees. We wanted to make sure that the permit fee number excluded Ox Ridge.
Yes. We never, we don't, they know we don't charge the schools permit fees. The only thing we will charge is what goes to the state.
Okay.
That was one of our cost savings in our original budget.
Was it really?
Yeah, they had, they had a number in there for permits.
Okay. All right.
But the big thing on the permits, what Jen did was last, I think, wasn't building permits a major variable the last couple of years?
Yes, because we've been budgeting the last few years for half of the anticipated redevelopment permits fees.
Yes.
And do we think we're in better shape budgeting this year on the permit fee revenue? Not to focus on revenue.
I think we must be, because work has begun.
Yeah, because projects are starting, yeah.
Some of the permits have actually been pulled. The demolition permit and the...
Foundation permit.
And the one for all the drainage.
Okay.
And the other thing that had been asked, and I believe I sent it out to all of you, and asked Pete, you know, when he thought he might need to hire the second part-time inspector, he would say nay.
Right, okay. Yeah, I'm really very concerned about making sure that we have very good customer service as we work through these projects. You know, I, I'm hoping to avoid the scenario where the developers, you know, come to me and say that it's taken too long for the permits, too long for the plan reviews, that kind of a thing.
Yeah, I think, you know, the one thing we, I think Pete is very focused on that, and I think he's done a lot of things to, with just any builder, to have some continuity, like, you know, trying to keep one inspector on a job so that you know you have a certain contact.
Oh, that's nice, exactly.
The one thing we could run into is, can we find somebody who wants to work part-time as building inspector?
Right.
And if we can't, and we need the hours, we may have to go with a full-time person.
Yep.
That, you know, when we no longer need that level, you know, then four full-time inspectors, you know, that we have to reduce staff.
Sure. The inspections are one thing, but before that comes all the plan review.
Yep.
To make sure that we can move those along timely basis. Okay. Anything else in building control? If not, we'll move on to community services. It's fine to keep that stable.
So remember, this was a cut of $3,500 from their house.
From what they requested, yes. So not really a cut. We didn't grant the increase that they requested.
Oh, okay. Well put.
But where does the five grand for the town hall landscaping?
It's in capital.
Oh, fine, because that's a beautification project.
Yes, it is.
Did you get any sense that by reducing their request, they weren't going to be able to... The baskets, that's always the big number. Are they going to still be able to fund the baskets?
Yes.
Okay.
That was 22? 22,000?
Yeah.
But what you told us...
There were some other projects that they wanted to take on that they may not be able to, such as the, you know, no empty window, some of those kind of things.
Okay.
But, you know, because we do it as a grant, you know, they could, I suppose, decide to spend a little less on baskets and do some other things.
Okay. All right, celebrations and community grants, fireworks, holiday lights, they're lovely. I will say that I think we're going to try and roll out at least for town hall facilities, more religiously equitable policy so that we can make sure everyone feels included in the holidays. Makes sense. Here we can talk about the historical society request. They came before us and asked for $50,000 to help support their efforts to become the Darien Museum, which is a fabulous idea. Did everyone receive their budget information? Have you seen that?
Yes.
Okay. So $50,000 to the historical society, the town would be providing 25% of their total budget. And I don't know, you know, it's a tough one.
I know.
We gave them $10,000 a couple of years ago because they are responsible for the care and keeping of certain historic documents.
Right.
Which made sense to us at the time. I don't know that I'm ready to support that kind of a grant request from the historical society until I, you know, can see the transition to the museum, the work of their board, what plans they have for, you know, building an endowment of any kind. I'm just not certain, but I'd love to hear from all of you about it.
I'm concerned that that's the new next step, love it, that every year would be $50,000 in loan, when so much of their request was for the equipment to scan in.
Correct.
Right.
It was really to archive and scan.
It was kind of a one-off capital purchase, and that would not be used after they finish itemizing their items.
Yeah. I recall that we asked them, you know, whether or not there were companies or things that could do that work for us, and we didn't have an answer at that time.
Well, they were uncomfortable, so...
Leaving, they didn't want the material leaving. They had to send it back.
Yeah, I remember that answer, but I'm just not sure that there was research done into it as to whether there might be a company that would come to the facility to do it.
Correct, right. No, we didn't get really a Plan B.
Yeah.
I thought part of their request was for some, to hire somebody, too.
Correct, yes.
They're going to hire, yeah, they're going to hire somebody, but I forget the exact term.
Which means it's an ongoing expense.
Correct, yes. Yep.
I mean, I think once in, you're going to be in.
Correct.
And the question is, is this going to be another grant that you're going to basically have the taxpayers fund every year? I don't know.
And is it appropriate to fund a museum?
Yeah, I'm sure some would argue that. They are the keepers of our town history, so there's probably a direct tie to the work of government, but I don't know that the request is yet ripe for me to consider it. So I'm going to request that we hold on it and maybe ask them to come back and talk to us again as their plans progress in the transition. Any other thoughts? Does anyone disagree with that?
No.
Other ideas?
Nope.
No, I just hate to lose this, you know, God forbid, they are holding information that for some reason isn't archived because they don't have the money. That is somewhat concerning.
I never got that sense. We also have another option. I mean, if we wanted, if there were documents that actually belonged to us being housed there, they can come back to the town clerk's office.
Yeah, maybe that's, that's the answer.
I'm not, I'm not saying that that's the right thing to do, because people do utilize the historical society when they go in to do research.
Yeah, no, no, as we did.
Does anyone feel that we should alter the $10,000 that we give, or are you satisfied that that's an adequate contribution at this point in time?
I would say with that.
You agree, Kip?
Yep, I'm glad, I just always wonder about where we all go, where we all go with this. Sometimes it's great. I mean, I think it's great, but I just don't know what, you know, two years ago, we were worried about school regionalization, having to pick up a big tag, a big tab for the pension fund, and if that comes back and hits us, all bets are off.
There's no question about that.
All bets are off.
Maybe that's coming back.
Yeah.
Everybody gets under the microscope at that point.
Pension fund, yes.
Okay. Any other discussions about the depot, kids in crisis, no, we're nothing for kids in crisis.
Well, they didn't come forward.
Are there others who have come forward?
Yeah.
There's been a couple that put in requests, and, you know, that we have not funded.
Right.
So if it's an agency that we've never funded, and we, you know, administratively, we look at and say, "No, you know, I'm not going to put that forward."
Right, no, no, that's fair. I just was wondering, kind of think, is it worthwhile, and the answer could be no, to have a discussion away from budget, just talking about grants and what our policy is, what...
Do you just have this conversation?
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's, we just, this morning, had that conversation that, you know, we should put together some guidelines and, you know...
Yes, I would be supportive of that. So it would help drive us, and when people come, you know, to you guys, it would help us...
Gives you a framework. Gives you a framework.
Correct. That's what I, I would like to see that, and leave everything, you know, as is.
Yeah, we're going to undertake a, a big project after the budget, developing eligibility criteria.
Correct.
How we can vet those requests, and then for those people that receive grants from the town, um, there'll be a grant agreement, and it will come with reporting requirements and a number of things, so.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay. Moving on from community celebrations, harbor master.
One of the bullies.
Yeah, all right, moving on to PD. So the big thing, well, there's a couple of things I want to talk about here. The big thing, um, is our, um, we'll wait till we get to communications. Police admin?
See, that's pretty much all contractual, right?
Yeah, police admin, no, actually, the, that's the chief. The salaries of the chief and captains, there is, there are two union people in that. A lot of it is contractual, like the uniforms.
The clothing, right, all that.
The helmets.
So we really don't have much discretion at all.
No, you don't.
Right. No, that's just a clarify.
And then, you know, the things that you would have discretion with there are like the Molly Vest carriers, but I really do believe that's a thing we ought to be doing.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
That's related to workers' comp claims, so...
Yeah, totally support that, but just for the public, that these are all, most of these issues are in a contract.
Okay, police investigation, and new. There's nothing there, but wages. Patrol. Now we have scuba, scuba sets. I'm okay with that. Our marine patrol has helped save lives, so.
Yep.
Yeah, they had that accident out of Stamford Harbor not long ago when that boat hit them.
And the new boat has side sonar now, that assist in finding people under the water, which is great.
That's cool. I didn't know that.
All right, um, records, in-car camera storage and licenses, it's very important.
Yeah.
You'll see over time, big, big charges for data storage, video storage.
Seems to be the constant.
But it has to be stored in catalog.
It's the biggest, you know, biggest cost with going to body cameras, is the storage of the data.
Sure.
How long do you have to keep that? I was just asking, as we don't think that.
Um, I can't recall.
Just curious.
How long?
Yeah, I don't recall with the...
Probably had to, they have to keep it as long as possible, court case, right?
Yes.
That was it, and so I, I remember they were talking about up to four years.
Yeah, I think that's on right.
It's a huge amount of, of storage.
That's a lot of data, yeah.
Oh, no, it's huge.
Yeah, especially for video.
Exactly.
Conferences and meetings?
Which under professional...
I'm sorry, line eight, PH eighty-nine.
Professional standards or, yeah.
I mean, it's fifteen hundred dollars, but...
That would be for the training, um, officer.
Which is, it's been, you know, it's been a couple hundred bucks in the past.
Right, and, well, that's their, they probably didn't spend it, um, I'm not sure where he goes.
All right, is it something we could just circle back on?
Nash. Nash? Now she.
Oh, she, sorry. So they're going to need fifteen hundred dollars for these conferences?
I'm sorry, I'm going to hear them tell me, the conference name's Navsheet.
Now, it's in-house training session expenses, instructor meetings, refreshments.
So training sessions are doing...
Hosting.
Hosting. So I think it probably goes up and down depending on what they're able to offer.
Okay, all right. They, um, next time the chief is here, they can tell you about the voluminous list of trainings that they have to make.
No, they mentioned several, and they have, but, but in eighteen, they spent three hundred dollars, and seventeen, they spent, you know, four hundred and fifty, so I'm just, why the big jump, but it's easy to say it may be cyclical.
Yeah, and, you know, just what they have, what's come up is, you know, new and what they have the opportunity to do.
Okay.
I believe in training.
Okay, school crossing protection.
Oh.
How do, how do we, how do we move forward with the, um, the concept of either call it a fee for service, where we barter, that maybe there's a, we can reduce our IT cost that we pay to the Board of Ed by the amount for the crossing guards?
Yep.
Um, wow. Talk to the superintendent? Talk to the Board of Finance? I'm going to look at my friends in the audience now.
Cut it out, just cut it and, I think, I think you need to have a discussion with them, and, um, maybe chairman to chairman, or talk to the superintendent, but say, you know, we believe this should be a Board of Education expense, just want to let you know, if you're watching TV seventy-nine, although I think they have their own meeting tonight.
They have their, they're all over at the five-leaf rock. They have a hearing.
Yes, so cut it, cut it now while they're not paying attention.
Well, no.
I think you need to have that discussion with them, and, you know, if you really want to do it, you've got to force the issue, because they're not going to come, and I don't think they'll just say okay.
So I don't want to send the wrong message to the public by cutting the crossing guards, because we know that right now, it's a, it's a very important issue, but, um, I do feel strongly that it's an expense that should be borne by the Board of Education.
Right, but then you're going to have to cut it out of this budget. So I would say...
Unless we arrange a fee for service model.
Unless you arrange some kind of reduction in our IT thing, yeah. But I think you've got to, you've got to address it soon.
Could we cut the IT budget by the like amount?
Yes, that might be the way to go.
Jack's shaking his head no.
Yeah.
I think you just, you need to have a discussion with them sometime this week.
All right.
Because you're voting on your budget next week.
Yep. Okay.
Even if you do not, if I might, even if you do not do it within your budget, it's a conversation that can occur subsequent to the budget and the amount moved if there's an agreement. So from a budget perspective, looking at the total town, the expense is going to be the same, and it's not going to affect the mill rate, which is where we have to be when the budgets are approved by the Board of Finance and subsequently the RTM. So I think it's a much larger conversation, and I hate for it to be not given its true value or discussion from both sides, because we're trying to lead an artificial budget date. Because it really doesn't affect the town's overall cost, it's just if Peter's paying for it or not.
Sure. Fair enough.
I'll put it in our list of the building.
I will initiate that conversation this week.
Is there anything else that would be part, so the IT, the SROs, I mean, are there other that we should put into that other?
Yeah, there's a, a few things, um, you know, we certainly want the chief to be part of those conversations.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay. All right, so communications. We're looking at dispatchers for the overnight shift. Welcome your comments on...
What's our seed meteors? That we'd say fifty thousand?
Not this year, though.
No, no, I mean...
It's about fifty-seven, fifty-eight thousand.
And the redeployment plan for the officers, is it dependent on either traffic or narcotics officers that you mentioned?
Uh, we should be getting a narcotics officer as soon as we're, a dedicated narcotics officer, as soon as we're up to the current full staff. The chief has been asked to put together a redeployment plan for, if you approve this, you know, how will we redeploy officers or redeploy the budget?
Right, right.
But that is not in place yet.
So is the narcotics officer a hire or a retrained?
No, no, it's just, it's just taking somebody out of the patrol.
More dedicated.
Yeah.
Got it, yeah, just curious.
So we shouldn't be thinking about, okay, you're going to redeploy, and possibly you, you're not at full employment now, you're not at full task. Maybe they could have one less full police officer. We shouldn't be thinking about that and trying to...
I think that's a perfectly valid thing to be thinking about. So when I'm saying redeploy the personnel or redeploy the budget...
Right.
You know, I think it's also, um, you could say, we don't need fifty-one, we could go with fifty.
Fifty, yeah.
You could say, we don't need fifty-one, but we don't want to cut the budget because we want, we need to hire an IT specialist for the police department.
That was the other, yeah, I just saw that, right.
You know, I think, you know, there are plans to be made. You know, maybe there's some kind of policing that we're not doing right now that the chief would like to. He may want to restructure, you know, how many sergeants and lieutenants we have to have a better command structure. What would be the right way to go? Do we need a cyber police officer, um, you know, dealing with just cyber crimes? So, you know, and going down to fifty officers is absolutely something to be considered.
Yeah, I'm not recommending, because these are all the possibilities that should be evaluated.
Yeah. We do, um, we took a look at the overtime proposal, um, and based on what they, what they had projected for the new dispatchers, assumed that each of the new dispatchers would use every vacation day they were allotted in the, um, in the fiscal year, and we didn't feel that was realistic, so, um, but otherwise, their numbers looked to be reasonable. And understand that, right now, if we have to bring somebody in on overtime on the midnight shift, that's a police officer, and it's not being charged to this budget. So we could, assuming you go with the three dispatchers, that overtime salary line could be cut by eight thousand dollars.
Okay.
Because also, they said they wouldn't call in a second overtime.
They might not call in a second on some midnight shifts.
Right, that they wouldn't be, so we'd cut the overtime there.
Um, they didn't project the overtime without, that's not how they calculated it, so I can't really tell you how much of a cut we can make on that, but, um, yeah, I think, you know, if you wanted to shave another couple thousand off, you probably could based on that.
Okay. So that was line four?
Line four.
Line ninety-one?
So we could about eight thousand?
Ten?
I think you definitely can cut eight, I think, you know, you could probably cut ten.
Okay. Well, first, let's, um...
Oh, yeah.
See how you all feel about the dispatchers. I'm inclined to support the dispatchers for the reasons that Kate said. It allows the new chief to think about how he wants to organize the police department, optimize the management of the police department.
And he's identified a couple of possible positions, which seem appropriate, narcotics, IT.
And, and if you believe that we should be fully civilianized in the dispatch, and, you know, I do, um, and I believe our police should be outdoing the work that they were trained to do, this is the year to, to get it finished. We have the opportunity to put this in the budget without a, a big impact on the taxpayers because of what the Board of Finance had done last year. So you, you have room in the budget to do this. You know, if you believe we should do it, but you want to wait a year, next year, you're going to be adding to the mill rate to do it.
There's also another sort of intangible to think about, too, because the idea of regionalizing dispatch, public service answering points, is talked about constantly in Hartford. And by having a fully civilianized dispatch, it would be much easier for us to, to do that than if we have officers.
Is that what the standard is around surrounding towns?
Civilians?
Civilians, yeah.
Yes. And many towns have already consolidated with other towns.
I'm, I think I'm with, with Kate, which is, you know, we made a commitment to move to this model several, several years ago. Now's a good time that we can afford to do it. On a personal level, I, I'm a little disappointed that there hasn't really any data today on the redeployment, uh, stuff, in terms of, you know, whatever the right statistics are, I don't know, number of, increased number of patrol hours, increased number of investigations, whatever they were doing, right? It would be nice to sort of have some of that to support the, the, the belief that the officers will be redeployed for, you know, sworn duty, duties, uh, but I understand that complications from having been sort of short-staffed a little bit. And I like the, I like the idea of, uh, giving the chief the flexibility to plan the department. The idea of having a, a full-time dedicated IT person, I think makes sense to me, and when, the minute that you mentioned cybercrime, that sort of popped into my head of the IT person could potentially double to help with the cybercrime component.
Rather cybercrimes than any others.
I guess I, I'll just articulate my, my one fear, and that is that, in, in all the time that I've been here, we never really seem to be at full staff. And I don't really want that to be a stumbling block to this redeployment plan.
Right.
You know, we approved the civilian dispatchers, and yet we still don't get these things because we're not, you know, it's determined that we're not at...
Full staff.
Full staff or close enough to it, so that's my only...
Yeah, well, I think, you know, what they're, what they're looking at is, um, it's a trade-off. If you were to pull, right now, if they were to pull somebody off of patrol to be a dedicated narcotics officer, you're going to see an increase in overtime.
Yep.
So they've made a trade-off. And, you know, I think you could have the conversation with the chief and say, you're okay with that, if that's the choice that the board makes.
Okay. I'm willing to support, how about you, Kip?
I am. Remember John Aziza, famous phrase, every employee adds a million dollars in ten years. So, it's tough, but I, I understand what the needs are, we're trying to get to. I'm, I'm hoping that part of the change that will happen many years from now, or a couple years from now, will be that we will probably see a regional dispatch, what do you call it? PSAP?
PSAPs.
PSAPs, uh, which, by having a civilian group already, will be well-positioned to have those people move into that slot. Um, I just hope a reasonable cost, unlike the Health Department proposal.
Right, there's going to be savings and not a expense, yeah.
And, you know, whatever can be done at, at the, at the police department level would be a bonus.
Okay. It would be nice to hear how, at some point in the future, and I'll say this to how this all played out.
Can we, can we sort of ask the chief to give us a reasonable deadline for when he thinks he can have a redeployment plan for us?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
What he feels a reasonable deadline?
I'm not a police expert, I don't know exactly...
I'll talk to him and see.
How, how that kind of plan gets framed, you know, in terms of the, what metrics they would develop, or, you know what I mean?
How about by the time the Board of Finance looks at the spending plan? Frank, I'm going to put you on the spot, is that something that would be important for you guys to see? Reallocation of resources?
I think it'd be helpful, and particularly just sort of setting the framework and the understanding of going forward.
Okay. All right. Fleet, station ops?
So we're still, we're still studying the HVAC issues, right?
What?
The HVAC issues for station ops?
Yes.
And that's, that expense is still in...
That's, I'm sorry?
The expense for the, for evaluating is...
That, oh, we've already, that was already budgeted.
Okay. And where, just, I can't remember.
That was a mid-year capital...
Pardon me?
A mid-year capital appropriation.
Okay, all right, so I, all right, so I didn't, it wasn't in this book, so I didn't forget it.
Animal control. It's nominal budget. And you can make some headway with cooperative purchasing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Naroten.
It's down.
Yeah.
Well, down because they had a special approach, or a special approach in the show.
I think for next year, I'd like to understand their grants.
The grant we give to each?
Yeah.
What they do with it.
Kind of throwing it under this whole grant concept.
Yeah, they would be, they would be included in our grant agreement policy.
Yep.
Future grant agreement.
Right, exactly, no, no, right, that's not, but just, next round.
Yeah.
Okay, Naroten Heights. And then the Fire Commission. Will also be formalizing a policy on the procurement by grant recipients of gifts and the impact that that has on ongoing operating expenses. There's the C-Med charge. Kate, it's on page 113.
Got it.
Fire Marshall.
And there was news from the false alarm?
No, those are revenues for, you know, inspections, planning use. False alarms go into a separate fund.
Right.
I did have a meeting today, by the way, on a completely unrelated matter with representatives from Aquarian.
Oh, okay.
And I brought up the hydrant charges, and I said it's, it's not sustainable, so.
And they said?
Yeah, this is the response.
They're actually going to get me more information about all this. So, they, they did say that when they get the rate readjustment, Kate, in October, that the water infrastructure and conservation adjustment goes back to zero.
Really?
Yeah.
That wasn't in the letter. So, well, that's nice to know.
How much is that now?
It's six.
Percent?
It was going up to 7% basically.
So, I mean, that was a pretty big number, wasn't it?
Yeah.
So this may have to go up, or may not, like, this is to me.
Well, we were going to increase it to 20,000.
We have to take it up to at least 5,000.
512, I have. So, do we start to go with 512, or can we just roll it?
Yes, yes.
But not worried about 560 yet.
Right, that's the other number.
But what, if that comes down, are we still at 512?
Well, I'm, I'm making a note here, so I'll take a look at those numbers tomorrow. If that goes to zero in October, what does that do?
Right.
But the, the increase is on the 455 base.
Right.
So, it's still going to have a big impact. So I'll run some more numbers.
So we're adding 20 grand?
We're adding 20 grand, but we may need to add a little bit more.
Such a big number.
Yep.
And we do, we will be adding hydrants with the new redevelopments, but.
Okay, so you're going to come back to us with another guesstimate on this number?
Yes.
Okay, Other Public Safety, Emergency Management. Keeping that. EMS. It's a bargain for the service that we receive. All right, moving on to Public Works, I'll try and go a little quicker. So just stop me, I don't, I don't want to rush anybody, but. Management and Engineering. Roadway and Walkway Maintenance.
My plug for sidewalks. Yep. I don't know where it goes, but, yeah. But we're also going to have another discussion, again, away from budget, was it concrete, asphalt conversation?
Yeah, what, yeah, what it uses where, that there was a policy that should be used, take a look at.
Right, is that away from this, that's just sort of on the list?
It's a good conversation to have, I've talked to him a lot about that.
Yeah, I know. It sounded like he wanted to speak more about it, like he was just itching to talk about it, so we'll give him his opportunity.
Everybody wants to talk about sidewalks.
Yeah.
Asphalt and concrete.
I'll listen.
All right, nothing in Roadway, Waste Management. Yes, we need to waste, manage our waste.
Yes.
Public Building Management.
And I think, you know, we got, the chairman of the Board of Finance is going to be on board for the capital of, you know, fixing our heating controls, because he had to go to a meeting in my office this morning, which was like a sauna. Sauna.
It is one of them.
All right, Parking Operations and Maintenance.
This is the Town Hall.
Yeah, Lee Roy West, Star Street, Grove Street.
Yes.
Page 140. Always like looking for ways to enhance the lives of commuters, just as a general statement, you know, certainly have some looking for good ways to reinvest. All right, Human Service.
Looking for more hours here?
Yes. Yes, for their part-time. They expect, you know, significant increase in clients with the opening of the Royal.
Correct. I'll forward to all of you some information I received today on the process of the applications for the Royal, so in case people ask you, it'll be good for you to, to know that.
Just kind of curious, why is the occupancy related to?
I think their original target was end of summer, this summer.
For occupancy?
I'll be, if you see it.
Yeah, this summer.
How many more units over the Town Hall?
It was, it was 30, and now it's going to be 55.
Okay, it's almost doubled.
Okay. Human Service Outside Assistance. Senior Center. No, I, I went over that pretty quick, is everybody okay with those extra hours?
Yes.
All right. It's not that much longer. Senior Center. So here we're.
Adding the part-time.
Part-time program person. Talked a lot about the, the value of that individual and as a backstop for when current two folks can't be there.
The programs have really grown.
Yep.
I, I'd like to have a conversation away from budget regarding revenues.
Right, so. You, I took a look at the charter, and.
The Town Hall?
I'm of the opinion, yeah, I'm of the opinion that the Board of Selectmen can set the, can, you know, say, we want you to have a membership paid. It's not, the Commission on Aging has no budgetary, budgetary authority. So, I would say, you know, with that, since, you know, it's nowhere else, it would reside with you.
Okay, okay, we should have that conversation. And we can invite members of the Commission on Aging.
Oh, absolutely, right. Joe Pankas. I don't know what the answer is, I just would like to look into it a little bit.
From what Beth has said, there would be support among the members.
Yeah.
Of the, the Senate.
They seem to give her, you know, sometimes they give donations for programs, which is interesting.
Right, just that.
Basically, the. All right, any other comments or questions about the additional part-time program staff? I think it's time. I think we've kind of, I think we've actually kind of pushed the envelope on.
What we can do with what we have.
Yeah, exactly. All right, Senior Transportation. Remember, we get reimbursed for stuff. Youth Services.
We don't get reimbursed for our share of the FICA and Medicare, do we?
And the drivers, no. No.
Or workers' comp?
No, no. Just for the straight salary and gasoline.
Okay.
Is that something we should look at?
I just want you to be aware of it.
Okay, no, no.
One of those programs is, you still pick up part of the tab, it's sort of invisible when you look at the budgets, because it's.
Yeah, no, no, thank you for bringing it up.
It's part of our employee benefits area.
Yeah.
That's interesting, it really, it really is outside assistance.
To, at home?
Yeah. We have it in Senior Transportation, but it really falls in the, the category of a Human Service Outside Assistance.
I suppose, yeah.
Jen, thoughts?
No, I, because the Senior Service Outside Assistance is managed by the Human Services Department. So I think that, that's a distinction. This really is its own.
Standalone.
Entity. And it, it's also not a grant because.
I was going to say.
We're paying payroll.
Yeah.
Do you think that we should seek reimbursement for the FICA and workers' comp?
I think it's a perfectly reasonable thing to request.
Or do we want, we can, let's, let's off-budget have that conversation.
Doesn't the FICA get deducted out of the payroll?
The employer's share.
Oh, the employer, uh, yeah, sorry.
The employer pays half, and half Medicare. It's probably worth, not as worth your time.
It's not worth much, but it's, it's a policy discussion that you should have.
Yeah.
We also, I suppose, provide overhead. We provide them with office space.
Yeah, yeah.
And.
Right, right. Some of that we may wish to contribute, but we should have that conversation.
Right.
You know. Okay. Youth. Public Health. Wash your hands. Just a little FYI, we probably, there's, there's a new protocol that's being put in place nationally that is flowing down to the state and local health departments that folks have, who have traveled from China, from certain places, are going to be under a mandatory self-imposed quarantine.
Right.
And it will require our health department to sort of administer that.
Oh.
Do check-ins and make sure that people are.
Oh, wow, okay.
And we think that we'll have the first one family that, that will apply to shortly when they return.
When do our students go?
I don't think they're going to go.
Oh, really?
I was looking to Dr. Adley about that.
Yeah, I was wondering about that, I can't.
I think that they're going to.
Typically go at the beginning of April.
I don't know for sure, but I believe he indicated that they probably won't be going.
Ask this here.
Yeah. Okay. Nothing, Increased Hours for the Public Health Nurse. Can you refresh my memory on how much extra time he's asking for?
Is it in the beginning?
I'm on page 167, do I see it?
I don't see it there, I don't see in the staffing. It was not significant, but.
It's in his.
Well, you can get back to us on that, how about that?
Okay.
I recall it wasn't significant. Okay, Library. Hello, thank you for your attendance and patience with us. So, I think a couple of us are struggling with the budget this year for the library. And, you know, I think where our struggles come is the disparity between personnel policy at the library and, and personnel policy for the town. And, you know, it's, it's difficult for, we, we were full participants in wage equalization processes that we've gone through over the number of years. It's challenging for us, I think, to consider supporting wage increases that outpace the wage increases that we'll be giving to anybody on the town side. And then, you know, the, the very large expense, unanticipated expense, you know, to fund the payout for Alan's retirement. And that certainly exceeds the policy of any kind of a payout that we would be providing to any Town Hall employees. So, I guess I would say first that it's, it's a great start for discussion and the basis for a grant agreement, so that we can make sure that we continue to have a full understanding of, of what our mutual relationship should be. We so value the public library's contributions to our community, and I think this year's budget request is kind of the first time that it's given a couple of us a little bit of pause, so, you know, I would like to have my colleagues comment.
So, I think that the dollar amount is as large as Public Works, well, on work. And we have a lot of oversight there, and a lot of communication, a lot of regular reporting, and I think that's something that we could continue to, and we could create rather with that relationship. The other thing that gives me pause is the increase is much higher than any other budget within this book, it is my understanding, is that correct?
I did put it to each, so it is large.
Yes.
Think the police might.
What would this, that add?
Yeah.
My understanding that they're usually around 4% for the ads.
Then it's giving me pause.
Yeah, the police, the police variance is bigger.
Yeah.
400,000.
What's our vacation policy, Carol?
Five, 10, you can carry over two times what you earn on an annual basis, so the largest amount would be somebody could carry 10 years, sorry, 10 weeks. 10 weeks.
10 weeks. That would be the maximum.
So we're paying down.
Five-week vacation policy.
We plan to put forth a proposal to pay down, similar to what we had proposed last year in the budget, to pay down the non-reps to five weeks. And we set that as the limit going forward, regardless of how much you earn in a year, that five weeks would be the maximum you could carry.
So I just, I'd like to ask Caroline, was there any thought about the Friends picking up any portion of that payout expense? Or no? You can be honest.
That'd been more a question for the board, honestly.
Okay, okay.
You know, I did speak with Town Hall to get a sense of their policy, and we just felt like we need to get something in place right now, but we're definitely going to look at it, you know, further.
What's your new policy?
Six weeks.
And at the $272,000, which excludes this payout, how much is that represented in over six weeks?
Oh, how many people have it suited?
No, how many, how much, how much of those dollars are represented by people who have more than six weeks? Take out everybody who's got six weeks carryover, or under, out of that number.
Yeah, I didn't look at that. Yeah, I didn't look at that. I know I can get that to you.
I just tried to.
It's definitely. I mean, that amount is over, what is, 25 employees? And we are seeing newer employees definitely using their vacation, so it's definitely a problem that is being diminished, you know?
I understand.
And you said you had around 10 that were currently outside the current policy?
Yeah, we do have some people that have exceeded that, none are anywhere near close to this year.
So are, do you think that the board will be considering some kind of a paydown similar to what the town is considering?
Yeah, I mean, we're not anticipating that it'll be an issue, honestly. We always have, you know, time in between hiring people, we always have employees at a higher rate leaving than we're for at a lower rate. So it's never been an issue before.
Yep.
I mean, it's something we're obviously looking at really closely and all options are reconsidered, you know?
I think that we're gonna come back to this issue. I think that it's possible that we may decide to take a little haircut on this budget for the first time, just because of the extraordinary expenses.
Yeah, I'm also of the feeling that, you know, you guys knew about this and it was never, never even put on the table in past discussions. We kept having discussions about bringing people up to salary parity compared to other libraries. And we stepped in and we did that. I forget whether it's 5% or something.
It was 5% for several years.
For a number of years.
Yeah.
But we never heard a word about the successive carryover. So I feel a little bit like I've been fooled. And I think the Friends should be able to pick up the slack, that's how I feel.
Well, first, I want to say a couple of things. Obviously, you know this is not anything personal, but this is a policy conversation that we're having. And I recognize that because we don't have an agreement in place, it makes this conversation very difficult. But, you know, certainly we wanna, we wanna do what's right, we wanna do what's fair. At the same time, we need to make sure that we are being mindful of how we spend our dollars in relation to all of the policies that guide the rest of the budget. So I appreciate your understanding on that. Anybody want to add anything else to that conversation for tonight?
I'll just support that, I think that we need to look at it, and that 6.06% is a big percentage increase. Even if you're just looking at it on a percentage basis.
Let's move on. Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec admin. Pay increases for the waterfront coordinator under beach and court facilities, I think that's reasonable. Two dollars an hour increase. Recreation facility maintenance.
Name of page are we on?
I'm on page 182 now. There's nothing here. Organized recreational events. Someday we'll find a new way to get people into the beach instead of printing permits for $17,000.
Yeah, yeah. You know. There's, there are other technologies out there that we might be able to evaluate.
Yep.
Take advantage of.
Yep.
So that's another discussion. Has there been any discussion about going away from a parking permit to a entry? I don't say every fee, but a family person?
I think there's, I think it has caused, the imposition of the sales tax has caused them to rethink that.
Okay.
So I think you'll see that coming from them.
Okay.
Okay. And, you know, maybe at some point we can go to a park commission meeting and talk about junior sailing.
I would like to talk about that, yes.
Okay.
I think it's falling into the funky, wonky.
It is.
Let's get rid of the wonky, funky stuff.
Okay, Fields and Grounds, we didn't focus on it, but the pest control, by the way, is.
The geese.
Geese.
And where is that?
It's 186.
Dogs?
$5,000. So it's for whatever, you know, we've tasked Pam with finding.
Plastic swans.
They didn't work.
Say it again.
Plastics didn't work.
They don't work.
The funniest, somebody called Parks and Rec about the dead swan and why they had to take the dead swan out. One of them had fallen over the two dogs.
Yes, they saw one, it was like, did someone have their BB gun out there? Like, I couldn't figure out how that one managed to come over.
So we're bringing the dogs back, I think that makes sense.
Yeah, we may.
We might.
Oh, we're not sure, okay.
We may.
Drones.
Oh, we, well, we talked about that, but there was a problem with that. Can't have a drone at Highland Farms.
You can, as long as you keep it far away from the paddocks, anyway.
Okay.
Scare the horses.
General overhead. Anything we can change here or no?
Not at this time.
No.
Unless we can get a more friendly mortality table.
Pardon?
Yeah.
Unless we can get a more friendly mortality table.
Friendly means they die earlier.
That's how you look at it, right?
I guess I didn't realize that's what I was saying.
Financially friendly means they go early and fast.
Then I'll have to take that comment back.
I work with moving towards 6%, that seems to be. Yep, okay.
Okay, Risk Management. We like it when it goes down.
Yeah, true.
Salary set aside, were you going to make an adjustment here, Kate?
Um, yes, I don't have the numbers in front of me, do you have them? Twelve thousand and something.
We can come back to that.
Okay, we'll come back to that, all right. Nothing in debt service. As my husband likes to say, it is what it is. Transfers to other funds. Capital we've been through. Sewer. You know, these are really self-managing, so there's not much time that needs to be spent on these. Ed's working hard on our Stanford WPCA contract.
On the parking, do you recite what you want to do about the fees for the meters?
No, I haven't, I haven't had that discussion with the pay station people yet. I, my inclination would be to move the daily fee up to $5, but.
Just include it in the fee, right.
The parking meters, unless we eliminate cash, we have to include it in the fee. And I don't think we should eliminate cash. We don't get that much. But I feel for the person who shows up there and, you know, they don't, yeah, they want to pay cash, maybe they don't have credit cards.
It's a convenience.
Yep, okay. So we could cut the contingency, salary contingency by 13,000.
Thirteen, wait, I'm sorry, one, page one ninety-two.
Uh, 192.
Going back. Thank you. All right, we're in Parking Operations.
I'm trying to spell that good number now, page two thirty-seven. So it's sort of back to where it was before. I'm sorry, I'm just following up on page 192. Did you raise it to thirteen?
Well, not exactly, but.
Well, ish.
It gets us back to about the revised.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. There's nothing in Parking Operations. State laws. Parking Operations Maintenance. Park and Capital.
Sewer Fund, I was looking up the salary contingency, did you mention restoring the root control?
Oh, yes, the root, in the Sewer Fund Capital. I had inadvertently cut the.
Root control? Right.
Is that in the book or no?
Yeah.
If you go to page 235 or 234, you'll see, it should be 49,500.
Oh, right, 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 so we're at 99.
Right. So, also in the Sewer Fund, sorry, the self-insured retention.
Oh, that's right.
So I talked to Ed, it is rare that we have something happen where there is damage to a personals, to an individual's home. So. I think if Jen feels comfortable that we could handle, if the situation comes up, that we have ways that we could handle it and handle it quickly, I'd be okay with you cutting that $30,000 out.
It just seems difficult for me to budget for the unknown, you know?
It's a just-in-case account.
Yep.
You know, we did get rid of the majority of them last year.
So, so how much confidence do we have that we could have a mechanism where we could get monies if needed?
The auditors have told us that we can. Go over budget on line items in that account without needing an access, a special appropriation.
Because it's self-funding.
Because the fund itself is appropriated for those purposes.
I see. And are you comfortable doing that? I mean, you're a finance director.
It's not my preferred, but I think that something like that could fall under the umbrella of it is an emergency. We can't have a resident live with a backup like that. And it would be more of a come-back-and-report that it occurred, and this is the expenditures that were incurred because of it. And the fund balance in that fund is certainly healthy enough to cover something like a $30,000 incident.
And that's, I think, the reason why I'd like to consider making a change. The money's there. Thoughts, anybody?
What page was this number on?
Yeah.
Uh, 232.
I think that makes sense.
Line 11.
Okay, self-insured retention, thank you.
Right, so put that, reduce that to zero.
Yeah, the, there is one other approach that we could take is, so in the year, similar to what Kip was saying with, if we collect more in revenue than we expected. In a year if we budgeted for $30,000, it's not used, it becomes part of fund balance. In the next year, we could have a contribution from fund balance on the revenue side of $30,000. That way there is an appropriation for that item. There's no question about whether or not appropriation should have been sought, but if it's unused, it's going back into support of the next year's budget.
So is that something that we could do in the context of this budget process? Remove the self-insured retention, but appropriate $30,000 from the fund balance?
You would leave the, you would have both sides, so you'd have a net zero. You didn't leave it in on the appropriation side, but last year we didn't spend it. So in theory, $30,000 went into fund balance, and this year you're gonna have a $30,000 appropriation, you're gonna have $30,000 of revenue contribution from fund balance.
So leave the expense in, create a revenue account.
Right.
Of $30,000. They wash.
I see.
No impact on the sewer.
But the appropriation is there.
If we need it.
No one could raise a question about.
Okay.
Not having an appropriation if it were needed.
All right. We'll take your guidance on how you'd like to do that, that sounds like it's probably a good plan.
I think that's probably the cleanest.
Okay, so we'll leave the expense in there and we will add the revenue item.
Okay.
And what that does is, it means that there's no impact on the sewer service charges for having that.
So if it's not, it just goes back to the Sewer Fund?
Yep.
And where?
Page 229 will have a contribution from fund balance.
So how would you phrase it, I'm sorry, what would it be?
Contribution from fund balance.
Contribution from fund balance for 30?
30,000.
Yep.
Okay, okay, good, thank you very much for that. You know, our rate payers just took on a higher rate recently, so I think that's a good thing. Parking Operations. Page 241, Parking Lot Admin, nothing. Parking Operations and Maintenance. Nothing, Employee Benefits. Okay. I think we've done it. The only thing that I want to just restate is, I'll come back with a. An updated list, but certainly we'll be passing on to the Board of Finance. Opportunities for funding certain capital projects, either from fund balance or for bonding. Sidewalk rehab, paving, gymnasium upgrades, heating control upgrades, the neuroton gas conversion, and depending on what happens with the concrete pad, drill tower expansion. Anybody have any other questions? I see we went kind of fast tonight, but we'll have an opportunity to regroup. Is everybody okay taking a pass on the meeting tomorrow night? You can think about any additional questions that you have, funnel them to Kate, and then we'll discuss again during our Monday Board of Selectmen meeting. We'll meet Tuesday for final deliberations and a vote. Make sense, sound good?
Yep.
Okay, I really want to thank you all for the process, I thought it went smoothly. I so appreciate fresh eyes from new members of the board on the budget, it's very helpful to the process.